Good evening and welcome to the Candidates Forum for the San Jose City Council District 3. I'm Julia O'Keefe from the League of Women Voters. League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 when women finally got the right to vote. We're a nonprofit partisan, pardon me, nonprofit organization of women and men, established to promote informed and active participation in government. We encourage our members and the public to vote, to pay attention to the actions of government, like city council, and even to run for political office. The League never supports or opposes any candidate or political party. We divide our work into two distinct parts. And we do study issues and with consensus of members, we do either oppose or support some issues, but we never ever support or oppose political parties or candidates. We're a grassroots organization. Next slide, please. We're a grassroots organization. There are five of five local leagues. We're a strong organization because our members of our local leagues not only are in the concerned about the local issues, but they also belong to the League of Women Voters of the Bay Area of California and of the United States. There are five leagues in this county. We are very strong in our voter service and education projects. We conduct candidates forums like this one. We also examine ballot measures in great detail and try to make them a little more accessible to our voters. We call this the pros and cons process. And of course, we always do voter registration. And one project we are very proud of is called VotersEdge.org. It's a website where if you go on and put your address and your zip code, you will get a copy of your local ballot. So you will be able to just have a look at it. You will be able to examine the candidates and look at the ballot measures in greater detail. So we encourage you to go see VotersEdge. Voters. Are we ready? Okay, VotersEdge, again, you'll get nonpartisan information on candidates, measures, and campaign finance, the measures that you will see on your own personal ballot. And for instance, this recording is going to be placed on VotersEdge as well as on the League of Women Voters website when our forum tonight is finished. But now, without further ado, let's get on to the forum. Our moderator tonight is Rosaleen Zish, who is a long-term member of the League. She will introduce the candidates as well as tell you about our format for tonight. Rosaleen?
Right. Thank you very much, Julia. And it's my pleasure to be moderating this evening for our District 3 candidates. And we do have a few rules that we're going to look at together. And this is just to remind you, the candidates receive all of this information prior to this evening. And they have equal time to speak and they can certainly finish a sentence before they're stopped. They may not be interrupted by other candidates. And with just the two of them, it usually works out quite nicely. They do not get the questions beforehand. These are a surprise to them as they are to all of us. And no one can, or we do not want anyone to record this forum or any portions of it for political advertising. And you can, as Julia already told you, you'll be able to see this on our website or on our VotersEdge. So we do invite you or friends that couldn't make it this evening to go there. The forum for tonight is the following. Each candidate will make a one-minute opening statement. Next, the candidates will respond to questions submitted from our audience in advance. The questions have been reviewed by League members. And the League has the final say on whether we use a question or not. What you need to please note is that we're not always able to use everyone's question. We have to sometimes combine duplicates or we broaden a question so it's not addressed to any single speaker. And then some that we just have to eliminate. Due to time limitations, not every question may be used this evening. Each candidate will also have one minute to respond to each of the questions that are raised by me. Questions will be directed to both. And then finally, the candidates will have one minute to make a closing statement. And we'd like them to respond to what questions to you wish we had asked. And they will get an opportunity to rebuttal. They have 30 seconds for a rebuttal, which they may use. And now, it's my pleasure to introduce to you our candidates this evening for City Council seat, San Jose City Council seat 3. And they are Omar Torres and Irene Smith. And I hope they will join me on this big screen. And there's Omar, wonderful, and Irene, right. And this evening, I like to start with alphabetically. And both of you are at the end of the last half of the alphabet. That's kind of funny, but S is before, it is before T, isn't it? Anyway, so Irene, you get to have the first minute.
Okay. I'm running because D3 is in a crisis and we need action and we need a sense of urgency. But our city policies remain stuck in the muck and are proven failures for D3. The city's response has been to pour in more mud with the same plans and then spend more money trying to get out of the hole they keep digging. So with this kind of pattern, it's worth looking at who benefits from all of this. Big benefits, big government, big business, big nonprofits, and big special interests. Little loses, our neighbors, our small neighborhoods, small nonprofits, the guy living on the sidewalk being told to stay there just five more years while we build, and the mom and pop, small business owners that are struggling to survive. I'm running because I can see solutions clearly without the mandated tinted glasses issued by special interests. I'm that new voice that can shake off the muck and my D3 recovery plan is the beginning of our answer.
Thank you very much, Irene. And Omar, one minute, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. I've been creating solutions in our neighborhoods with our nonprofits, with our small businesses since I was 14 years old. Together, we revitalize a community that historically has been under-invested. And on day one, I will not need training wheels to deal with our most complex issues here in the city of San Jose. We all want clean streets. We all want clean parks. We all want business corridors that are thriving. And we are going to work and create these solutions to make sure that our housed have the services they need. We're going to continue to work with our neighbors. On dumpster days, we're going to continue to work with our small businesses to make sure that we have thriving business districts.
Thank you, Omar. And now we'll go to our questions. And the first question is for you to define your perception of your role as a councilperson. And Omar, you'll be first on this one.
One is building relationships. That's extremely important, building coalitions to solve our most complex concerns, issues, crises here in the city of San Jose, connecting the dots. I've been a community organizer my whole life. And that never, I have never ever said, "We can't do that." "I won't do that." It's always been about working with our community, bringing all sites to the table and creating real-life solutions that are improve our neighborhoods, that improve our business corridors, and then improve our city in general. That's what a council member should be, is building relationships, coalitions, and making sure that we're investing in all of our neighborhoods, in all of our residents, in all of our businesses.
Thank you, Omar. Irene?
My job as CM is to get programs and policies passed with my fellow councilmembers to address the inequities D3 experiences every day, which means decrease crime, quit using D3 as a dumping ground for the city and county's homeless population and affordable housing schemes, clear out inhumane and dangerous homeless encampments, and revitalize our small business. To do this, I'm going to have to be a thought leader to come up with new ideas. I'm going to have to be a bridge builder and work with other CMs to agree with me because I'm only one of 11 votes. And thirdly, I'm going to have to be a woman who says no to stand up firmly against the group think in City Hall that currently punishes D3. There's a lot of go-along and get-along, and that has been disastrous for D3. I will need to stand firm.
Thank you, Irene. Our second question, District 3 had a point person assigned to each neighborhood, such as the downtown area. Will this continue if you are elected? And Irene, you're first on this one.
Yes, a point person is going to be absolutely critical to play that role for communication and feet and street on the ground so that they can see what's happening and relay that back to us. We really have to focus on our community feedback structure. And my hope is that we build an organization of community listening in the departments for the city. This means that the city has to be more responsive and listen to what we're saying and feed it back to us and then measure it and give us a spreadsheet that says, "This is the feedback that we've gotten and this is how we're using it."
Thank you, Irene. Omar, your response?
Absolutely. Again, I'm a community organizer at heart. It is very important that our staff is out there working in our neighborhoods and with our businesses. That's extremely important. As Community Relations Director for Councilmember Magdalena Carrasco, because we were always out there making sure we were connecting with our community, we were able to bring in more crosswalks, improve our business districts, and that's going to continue if I become councilmember. My staff is going to be your staff.
Thank you. The next question says, "Name the three most urgent goals you have as a councilperson for District 3. If you could choose only one objective to meet, what would that be?" And Omar, this one's yours.
We have obviously dealing with our unhoused community in the city of San Jose. That's a humanitarian crisis. Economic development is another one. And public safety. If we do not fix any of those three, then our downtown neighborhoods do not thrive, which means our city is not thriving. And so those are the top three major issues that on day one, I will make sure that we are building relationships, we're building coalitions. We are, we will begin to write policies to make this happen.
Thank you. And Irene?
My three goals are going to be restaffing the police to levels where we can get San Jose back to the safest big city in America. And number two is shelter stability now. We're failing our unhoused neighbors by letting them live in dangerous and unhealthy and unsanitary conditions and also degrading the D3 neighborhoods around them. My solution is the incremental ladder of housing success. And it's an important step to put emphasis on shelter stabilization and services and treatment first instead of waiting for housing to be built. And my third step is vouchers now. That's the answer to keeping folks from getting unhoused. We have a Section 8 program that we can actually make better. And if I had to pick one of those three, I think the number one thing for me is that we've got to clean out the encampments in D3. Our approach to homelessness has been a failure. It's just a re-traumatizing hamster wheel of abatements.
Thank you, Irene. Our next question is, "There is an increase in complaints about the fire and police response time. What would you do to decrease the times for public safety?" And Irene, you're first on this one.
Well, first, when I talk to the police, I meet with our captain on a monthly basis. And one of the things he's constantly saying is that they're getting inundated by 911 calls and fire calls to the encampments. So that delays their response to other calls. They also get calls for co-enforcement. So the police and the fire have started to become our catch-all. And for me, I imagine the San Jose PD in 2023 that it's a city where we've recaptured our position as the safest city. And it's a police department that can respond to 911 calls because we've appropriately positioned them for success because they don't have to do other departments' jobs. They can do the job that they were hired to do. And I'm hopeful that we can pay officers at a rate that are equal to or higher than neighboring cities and a police force that actually can enforce our laws.
Thank you. Omar, your response?
Well, I don't want to go to the, back to the past, but we have to. And we're in this situation because of Measure B. That's the unintended consequences of vilifying public employees. And so since that debacle over 12 years ago, we are suffering the consequences. We have 30% vacancy rates in every department, including our fire department, including with our, including our police department. And so on, again, on day one, I'm going to make sure to work with our bargaining units and our city staff managers to make sure that we are hiring police officers that come from San Jose, that are diverse, that we pay them well, and that they have good pensions. We have over 100 vacancies in our, in our fire department. We need to make sure that we have fully-staffed firehouses for our neighborhoods. But this is all because of Measure B. And so we need to make sure that we are honoring our public servants who have kept us out of harm for so long.
Thank you, Omar. The next question for us this evening is, "How will you balance the opinions of your constitution, oh, excuse me, not constitution, it's your, the people that live in your area and the goals of the city as a whole?" And Omar, you're first.
We all know that we want the best for our downtown, our neighborhoods and our businesses. And so we are at a critical moment in our history in the city of San Jose. This is all hands on deck. It doesn't matter if you're Democrat, doesn't matter if you're Republican, doesn't matter if you're independent, doesn't matter if you're a small business owner, large business owner, homeowner, renter. This is a beautiful city with beautiful people. And it's important that we all work together, bring our ideas to the table, and pass policies that are going to benefit everyone in the city of San Jose. District 3 is a direct reflection of the whole city, business, labor, et cetera. I know that together, we can solve these complex issues without blaming each other and working to make the city of San Jose the prestigious city that is, that is, that it was once.
Irene, it's your turn now.
I believe the way forward for D3 to balance the goals for the district versus the city is we can, we can follow the spirit of Jane Jacobs in the book Death and Life of Great American Cities and get less centralized and more local in our planning. San Jose is hyper-centralized and its model does not meet the needs in D3. Let me give you an example. Citywide, there's no budget for towing RVs. Our D3 is overrun by RVs and abandoned vehicles. And it's a critical quality of life issue for residents and small businesses. But D3, D10 and other districts don't have an RV towing problem. So when it comes to voting for an RV towing budget, it's dismissed. I believe we need to start the process of creating greater planning, administrative, and financial independence for all of our districts, but especially D3. And there's more on this on my website under my D3 recovery plan, liberate D3.
Thank you, Irene, right. The next question has to do with sales tax revenues. For the downtown businesses, it's dropped significantly compared to the rest of San Jose. How would you help those businesses rebound? And this one, Irene, you get this one first.
Well, we have to revitalize our small businesses. They're completely interlocked with families. And so for revitalizing the small businesses, we're going to be able to support our families. And you're right, in your walk down downtown D3 and things are boarded up and there aren't sales. And part of that is because we don't have the employees back from City Hall. But we have to balance that with getting the best people from, for City Hall. If we force people back so that we can increase sales, then we may not get the best and brightest for our employees, the employment for the cities. So I want to make sure that we, if there's a hybrid solution in there, that we can have a hybrid that still attracts people. And we need to be able to have a specialized unit that's devoted to small business success. Because from my perspective, I don't see San Jose invested in the success of small businesses.
Thank you, Irene. Omar?
I deal with this every single day as business manager for the San Jose Downtown Association. And so the answer, also complex, but one-stop shop for permit processing here in the city of San Jose. There's permit after permit after permit here in the city of San Jose. We have to cut through that. I've been doing that for well over two decades, helping our small businesses open and succeed and thrive. We need to waive business tax licenses here in the city of San Jose, especially for our business for the last two years that have, have suffered the worst through COVID-19. Most importantly, we need to subsidize rent, especially for our storefronts. We need to make sure that we are subsidizing small businesses to come in and thrive in any part of San Jose District 3 that they want. It is better to see a thriving business than a boarded shop in District 3.
Thank you, Omar. Our next question, District 3, along with District 7, has many affordable housing units. How would you encourage a fair distribution of affordable housing throughout the city? And Omar, you're first on this one.
Well, the, the, again, we need to work with our whole city council to make sure that we are building affordable housing throughout our city. This city was developed for cars. This city is, was developed not as a walkable city. And so we need to make sure that we are working to build transit-oriented development, not only in our downtown core, but throughout our city of San Jose. It is, it is very unfortunate that we do hear our concerns from our Spartan Key neighbors and our North First Street neighbors that there are too many affordable housing developments. I will be real, I support affordable housing. I support permit of supportive housing. But it is important that we work with other council districts, other council districts, our, our housing department to build affordable housing throughout our city of San Jose that has public transportation that's accessible to the residents.
Thank you, Omar. Irene?
We need to pressure the housing department to do their job. The housing department currently refuses to acknowledge all the vast variety of affordable housing that already exists in D3. Sororities, dorms, halfway houses, roomy houses, shelters, tiny homes, home key hotels, rent-controlled units, mobile home parks, group homes, and there's so much more. But this is different from any other district in San Jose. And this refusal negatively impacts the affordable housing distribution to D3 and ignores the city's own siting policy. The city must follow their own rules and stop dumping on D3.
Thank you, Irene. In a recent study, San Jose ranked first in cities facing major housing shortages. Name the most important steps you will take to resolve this problem.
I think that's me. Is that me? So for me, the answer is immediate shelter stabilization and local renter vouchers and repurposing underused existing spaces. By implementing the incremental ladder of housing success, we can help those who are living on the streets and on the creeksides get the shelter stability, safety, showers, services, and security. Now, we know there are many different types of unhoused experiences. So to address other types, the Placement First program takes advantage of unused spaces to repurpose and reimagine how those spaces can increase housing. For example, look at Milpitas. They've made a call for empty bedrooms to help teachers get into housing faster. We must also look at prevention. My rental voucher program assists families in need to keep them in their homes. And of course, we need new housing, but not in a decade from now and not at $1 million a pop.
Thank you. Thank you, Irene. Omar?
Rosaleen, I'm very sorry, but I believe my internet went unstable and I did not hear the question.
Oh, no problem. Let me repeat that for you. In a recent study, San Jose ranked first in cities facing major housing shortages. Name the most important steps you will take to resolve this problem.
So we know that our unsheltered, we have a humanitarian crisis, we know that. But we, we are facing a housing shortage for everybody here in the city of San Jose. And so I strongly believe that we need to increase our commercial linkage fee to help fund more affordable housing. That's extremely important. We need to make sure that we continue to build permit of supportive housing because after our unhoused folks are temporarily stabilized from the creeks, from the parks to business districts into shelters, into tiny homes, into modular homes, they need to be in beautiful apartment buildings here in the city of San Jose. They deserve it. And so we also have to hire more city planners because there are projects, even for market rate housing, stuck in the permitting process here in the city of San Jose. So again, because of Measure B, we have, we have a low shortage of city staff and we need to make sure that we're hiring more city planners to push through housing development for all.
Thank you, Omar. And interestingly, because you just mentioned it and we have a question. And Omar, you're first up. Do you have recommendations for streamlining the permitting process?
Absolutely. If we have a one-stop shop for ADUs, we can have a one-stop shop to build housing here in the city of San Jose. But again, I'm going to But again, I'm gonna go back to, to what I said. Our city planning department pushes through housing projects and currently, again, a thirty percent vacancy rate. Our city planners here are trained the best they can be. And then they leave us for Sunnyvale, they leave us for Mel Peters, they leave us for the city of Santa Clara. And by the way, they leave us to get paid over twenty thousand dollars more. So again, I'm gonna go back to make sure that if you want to work for the city of San Jose and serve our people, you, you're gonna have a good job with good pensions, making sure that you're gonna help us build housing in the city of San Jose.
Thank you Omar. Irene, your response on this one, yeah?
So streamlining permits is going to be critical to the goal of building. The mayor had a goal to build, goal of building twenty-five thousand units and ten thousand of which would be affordable and we've fallen way short. And I have a realistic, specific plan to streamline the process. And here's a list. We need a master plan for the permit process itself. We need to consolidate multiple department permit review processes. And then we have to consolidate the fees and we have to publish the fees in advance to our developers. And we need to reduce multi-inspection processes. And we need peer review certification of industry experts in order to avoid delays. And then we have to measure and adjust our goals to ensure that we're hitting them. Doing this right needs a perspective of developers, land use experts, permit policy experts and others because we need to answer questions such as where and how fast, and we need to be more inclusive of who helps us solve these problems.
Thank you Irene. The next question. What programs or strategies would you suggest that would help meet the needs of the young, low income and underserved residents of San Jose? And Irene, you're first.
Um, so, young Americans are enduring staggering high rates of joblessness. The official unemployment rate for sixteen to twenty-four year olds is fourteen point five percent. And I'm sure it's worse in D three. The pandemic exacerbated this problem and youth unemployment leads to bad downstream results. So the solution has got to be upstream, so more jobs. And here's what I suggest, four points. Number one, double down on community colleges. Work with nonprofits to develop high school and college training programs that meet the needs of high demand industries. And expand apprenticeship programs at the city level. And then finally, work with schools and nonprofits to overhaul the school dropout prevention policies. Providing jobs for our youth is arguably the most important upstream thing that we can do to solve D three's long term problems.
Thank you Irene. Omar, you're up.
So if, if it wasn't for the Washington United Youth Center that I helped build and the Biblioteca Latinoamericana that I also helped build with many of my neighbors of all ages, I wouldn't be here today. Yeah, it's unfortunate that folks like myself who grew up in the Washington neighborhood, most of my friends fell to drugs, fell into a gang, are in prison, didn't graduate from middle school or high school. And so for me, this issue is real and this issue is raw. It's, it's, it's life or death for our, our many youth of color here in the city of San Jose. And so I am very happy that our city of San Jose has continued to invest in our youth and I will continue to do so by making sure that our libraries are fully staffed and that they're open on Sundays, just like our library is doing now. Making sure that we're investing in early childhood education here in the city of San Jose and that, that we continue to invest in our youth because that's the number one deterrent of crime, investing in our youth and our children.
Thank you Omar. This question has to go with, actually, it's one that we find in other districts as well. But District three especially has a large dichotomy between homeowners and renters. How would you balance the different concerns of both groups? And Omar, you're first up.
I'm a proponent of rent control. This is the number one deterrent of, of folks being one displaced and folks losing their house. And so I'm, I'm a strong believer in making sure that our renters are protected, making sure that our renters stay here in the city of San Jose. But I also know that it is important that we continue to address the concerns of many of our beautiful homeowners here in the city of San Jose, right? Every single homeowner deserves to have good quality streets. Every homeowner deserves to have a beautiful park in their, in their neighborhood. Every homeowner deserves to, to, to live in a safe neighborhood. Even renters deserve that. I'm, I'm telling you, this is a very diverse city. We have many complex concerns here in the city of San Jose, but together we can live in unity and together we can all love and live in our neighborhoods.
Thank you Omar. Irene, your response?
I don't think we have to balance the interests because I think that the interests of renters and the interests of homeowners are the same. We want access to our parks. We want to take our families on picnics. We, we want the same things. We want parking. We want to be able to drive through the streets. So the things are the same. But getting down to the nuts and bolts of how do you get to a rental, how do you get to homeownership? That's where we have to talk about. Rent control in San Jose is only on twenty-five percent of the apartments. Quite frankly, the rental voucher program would help a wide variety of people. Rent control, you could have a Tesla and have rent control. It doesn't help. So the issue is the rental voucher program. And then also, how can we help people get more homes? The county has a program. San Jose could help the county. We should help people have more homeownership if that's what they want.
Thank you. Thank you Irene. And I think we're going to move into, this will be our last question and then we'll have a opportunity for each of you to have a minute. And the last question has to do something that both of you have mentioned this evening, that the homelessness. And it's increased, of course, as we all know in the last few years. But what are the top three solutions to reduce the number of unsheltered individuals? And Irene, you're first.
Well, I'll, I'll go back and reiterate for me. Number one is shelter stability. We've got to help people who are in the creeks and we've got to help folks who are living on the sidewalks where daily we get folks who are setting up tents on sidewalks. So shelter stability with the incremental ladder of housing success is a really important first step. They get the shelter, services, treatment. This is what those folks are asking us for. The second thing is vouchers. We need rental vouchers for people who really need it to prevent further homelessness. And I want to look at our plan, my plan for placement now so that we are looking at empty spaces and we're asking how else can we repurpose that? What else can we be using and how can we turn that into housing? All those three things, we could do them right now. We don't have to wait.
Thank you Irene. Omar, your response?
Oops. Oh, yes. No, of course. So again, our housing crisis is systemic. Our housing crisis is because of all these social inequities that, that has happened here in our city of San Jose. We have long overly underinvested in many of the communities here in the city of San Jose. And so our unsheltered population, it's, we see it every single day, but that's because of the policies and the underinvestment that we've had. Immediately, we are gonna work to stabilize our unhoused population into tiny homes, modular homes, creating more shelter beds, working with, with VTA for our under, our underutilized parking places. But the end goal, the end goal is that we need to make sure that we are building permanent supportive housing for our unhoused. That is the end goal. We need to build more affordable housing and more supportive housing for unhoused.
Thank you. Thank you Omar. You each have now one minute for a closing and we will go with Omar first.
So thank you for having us today. We all know again that we have major concerns here in the city of San Jose. And, and we see it every day. We feel it every day. And we all have opinions. We all have blogs. We all have a thing to say about it. But again, it's about working together. It's about building coalitions. It's about experience in the next council member to make sure that we are dealing with these major concerns. And for the past two decades, I have been boots on the ground with my community in working with these complex and, and working with these complex concerns that we have by creating solutions to, to the crises that we have here in the city of San Jose, underinvestment in our youth, making sure that our, our unhoused are housed, making sure that we have beautiful, clean neighborhoods. And I will continue that as council member.
Thank you Omar. And Irene, you have a minute now to tell us what you want to make sure we hear. Thank you.
So I think you also asked us about, in the beginning, you asked us to mention about what we wished you asked. And I, from my perspective, its context is missing from a lot of these fora. How did we get into this mess? What government decisions contributed to the crisis in D three? And these types of questions would provide accountability to office holders and provide useful direction to how to fix our problems. How did our, our homelessness really increase from so much from two thousand and seventeen? Why are we re-traumatizing people through abatements? And who on earth decided that keeping a low police force was a good idea? This whole race boils down to, do we want to go down the same road or a new route? We are choosing between unconsciously following our old habits or selecting consciously to make a change agent. My experience in business, mental health and housing will lead us forward with real world expertise that D three desperately needs.
Thank you Irene. Want to thank both of you, Omar and Irene. Yes. District three is very fortunate to have both of you working so hard for that district, serving it in so many ways. And so we wish you both the best in this election. And thank you again. I'm gonna invite Julia to come back and close us this evening.
Thanks Rosaline. Just before we go, I want to remind you that November eighth is right around the corner. You may already have received your ballot, your voter information guide from the Secretary of State. And in a very short time, you'll get from the registrar of voters, your paper ballot. When you get that ballot, use your best information, check out Voters Edge and put that, that ballot into the, your envelope, mail it or find a drop box near you. Just be sure you vote. Meanwhile, these next few weeks, the League will continue to be busy producing more forums. There's several for this area and they're all online on Zoom except for the Santa Clara one, which is in person on September twenty ninth. I think we all know that democracy is not a spectator's sport. We hope that the insights you've gained from this forum will aid you in making your decisions. So please vote on or before November eighth. Thank you so much for attending tonight. Thank you to our two candidates for sharing their time and their views. And good night from the League of Women Voters.